It's seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Westbrans, Cascade Supervisor. Looks later, please call the roll. Trustee Shipley. Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Castle.
Here.
Treasure Pears.
Here.
Looks later, here Supervisor Westbrans, here. Thank you. Please rise if possible for the pledge of allegiance. Approval of agenda, is there discussion or emotion for approval of the agenda?
If we make a motion to approve it as written?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carrying. Article four, presentations. Considered amending the agenda in the last day to include a brief presentation regarding the good news that we received recently, yesterday, about the $5 million state grant that was awarded to Cascade specifically for PFAS remediation. So this is a great development for Cascade as we move forward with the remediation process. Manager Swayze, why don't you take a second to just explain the details? After I stole your thunder.
Yeah, thank you. So we did get some great news yesterday. We were notified along with the City Grand Rapids that we were the top application for the C2R2 grant application. So they've recommended to the ad board that we get the full $5 million grant that we requested. The ad board will be considering that today at their meeting. As long as it's approved, which we don't anticipate there'll be any issues, the City Grand Rapids should get their grant agreement for approval on June 1st. So we've got three years from the day that that is issued to do that project. It's a great start on a big project. I had a brief meeting today with the City Grand Rapids to set up future meetings to talk about the grant administration. It's a little cumbersome with it being a Cascade project and Grand Rapids being the grantee. But it's excellent news for our community and we'll start bringing clean water to that neighborhood as soon as we can.
Thank you, and thanks for your hard work on it. You really did a great job. Article five, public comments. We welcome the opportunity for everyone in Cascade to share their ideas, thoughts, and concerns with us during this portion of public comment. We do want to be respectful of everyone's time, and I just want to remind people that to do that, we'd like comments limited as close as possible to three minutes. Also, this section of the meeting is really for us to listen to residents and make statements. Sometimes it's awkward, but if there are certain questions, the best, the best way to do it is to contact, to call the township directly during business hours or send an email. So just for the public comment session, I just wanted to, I hadn't always mentioned that, but helpful. Anyone wishing to speak, if you could, please step up to the podium. It's easier for us to hear you that way. And also, if you could state your name and also address for our record keeping. So with that, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Drukey. My address is 55 Campbell Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan 49503. And I'm an attorney at Rhodes McKee, and I represent a number of people within the Thornapple River Special Assessment District. And I'd submitted a letter to the board for its consideration with respect to agenda item 11. And I wanted to reiterate my position set forth in there, but on behalf of the residents within that special assessment district. This, the process relating to the Thornapple River Special Assessment District is of incredible benefit, not only to the people within that district, but with the township as a whole. I've reviewed all of your steps through that special assessment district, and I believe that the entire process was valid and followed and complied with the statute in the Public Act 188. And I'm urging the township board to continue moving forward on its process. The board has continually ratified throughout that entire process, all of the prior steps, all the way up through resolution number four, at which time this township board indicated and stated in resolution number four that the special assessment role had been submitted by the township, certified by the township, thereby completing and ratifying any potential possible misstep. This township board had in the past corrected missteps with respect to notice, and it has also satisfied and corrected any other mistakes, if any, that have happened. With that said, there are no more mistakes. And with respect to your process, you followed it to the T with the statute. And I would urge this board to come out of its closed session later on in this meeting and move forward with the Thornapple River Special Assessment District. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm William Lewis from 7310 Kilmer Street, Southeast 49512. And I'm not a professional or a lawyer, and I don't know all of the dots. But I've sent most of you repeated emails for my public comment each time there's been a meeting prior to this one. And so I'm here in person now to encourage you, the river needs our help. We want the river to be healthy. People from outside Cascade use it. At, they enter the river many places, but a lot of people enter at Alaska and at Caledonia and float down. I see them passing my property all summer long. And the river needs our help, and I just encourage you to keep this moving forward and approve it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gabe Wing. My address is 7429 Cascade Woods Drive, Southeast Grand Rapids 49546. I'd like to request that the board consider funding a feasibility study to determine if community-owned internet makes sense for our township. Internet service has become a utility just as essential as gas, electric, or water. This past year, this fact has become very apparent, as so many of us have worked and learned from home. Affordable, reliable, high-speed internet access is quite simply a must-have today. Despite that, we know there are residents in our community who don't have access to broadband internet. We also know that there are a limited number of internet service providers for our community, and not every provider can offer the bandwidth needed by residents working and learning from home. In order to address these needs, we believe that township should explore a community-owned internet solution. A community-owned system is focused on providing service to our residents, not maximizing profits through teaser rates and annual cost increases. There are several communities in Michigan across the country that have successfully brought low-cost, reliable, high-speed internet access to their residents. The list includes Traverse City, Marshall, Linden Township. The cities of Farmington and Farmington Hills recently completed a feasibility study in November of last year. Long Mat, Colorado is a great example of a community-owned internet system that is thriving and providing super-fast speeds at reasonable prices. It's important to note that access to high-speed internet supports attraction and retention for residences' businesses as well. Right before COVID hit, a small number of residents came together to address the broadband gap in our township. Our research is compiled on a website that we shared with the board prior to this meeting. Completing a feasibility study would help document the current state of broadband in our township, review potential network models and designs, given the unique requirements of our township, and deliver a cost analysis and a business plan so that we can make the right decision for residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Oberlin. My wife Kathy and I live at Berger Avenue. We have been residents of Cascade for 20-some years. We've lived on the river for all those years. We're here to unequivocally support the SAD. We think it's much long overdue. We actually own two properties, and I will end up paying twice, and I'm glad to do that. I think it's an important part to increase the safety of the river for those that use it, but also to maintain the values of the properties, which is always good for the tax base in Cascade. So just wanted to voice my public support for the SAD, along with my wife Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Shirley Hoekstra, and I'm here with my husband Jeff Hoekstra. We live at 7288 Cascade Road. We've been here since 2012. And first of all, we want to thank you for your service, and we hope that you will support SAD. We think that the river is such an incredible resource for our area, and that protecting our waterways is a very important thing to do. So please enact that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Amy Dowling. I live at 3528 Goodwood. I'd like to start saying I don't understand why we aren't even talking about this today. The sad that is. We've done, crossed all our Ts, dotted all our Is, put a lot of money and time into this. It's been approved, it's been voted on, everyone has put in their share of comments. And I don't understand why we're having to do it again. I don't know where you guys track all of the comments that we've put in. All of us have, like one person said, have put in many times are that we want this approved. So to find out that a technicality that was, may have been intentional is what's holding it up is frustrating. So to leave my children as a single mom to be here is not easy. But I would like to bring to everyone's attention, frustrated. There was an email I found, public notice dated February 11th. And I do have some things that I will give to you to take to your behind-door conversations. And it reads, "To Peter Kenny, regarding SAD, SAD meeting, they made the wrong decision. Would you be willing to serve on the Adcot, AdHoc Committee that has to be set up to decide how the funds are spent? Let me know. I would also like two others who spoke against the SAD on the committee as well. Talk to you soon, Grace." So how, if you went for this position, saying that you feel that whatever, do you live on the river?
Yes.
Do you think that you can go against what everyone voted for?
No, there was a three to four vote, and it's not a technicality, and it's nothing intentional, and I have no more than one vote. That was about addressing the AdHoc Committee, that making sure the representation was equal. My vote was public, so hopefully our attorney's in here, and he will explain where in the process we're correcting tonight.
So there will be a lot of explanations tonight to explain why we're doing this.
Yes.
It's not the loss of a signature or a missing of a signature.
It has directly to do that, but it will be helpful to you, I hope, to understand how that happened, and there was nothing intentional about it. The township is working hard behind the scenes to make sure that the majority vote and the public's will is happening.
Didn't we already do that?
This is, you know, the attorney will explain it. I'm happy to explain it afterwards, but your assumptions are just not right. So I hope that we can explain your concerns later on in the meeting.
Good evening. Scott Rissy, 7238 Cascade Road. I have this sad fax sheet, no pun intended, that was distributed to property owners with access to the Thornapple River many times over the past six years. And it would appear that some people that even supported the SAD now are beginning to voice opinions against it. And much of what I've read on the internet and here in meetings from those who are against the SAD appears to be based on information that is not factual or accurate. That sheet was the basis of this process and explained the facts to great detail. This process began almost eight years ago in, in close discussion with the township to ensure that we didn't have any hiccups along the way. In fact, it was originally recommended by former supervisor Julian, I found out, in the mid-2000s. And then when I became president in 20, around 2014, 2015 of the River Association, we started the process again, following that lead. Through all of the public hearings, it appears that things have gone smoothly, and there's been a lot of discussion between manager Swayze and Supervisor Westbrans, and I think trustee McDonald made some comments. It looks like everything is concrete. And, and so we hope that you guys can move forward quickly. I would like to highlight one quick thing in this fact sheet. It says, "Funds will be collected as needed, and the dollar amount each year may fluctuate based on annual costs not to exceed $300 per year. If no projects are conducted, or the association wants to end the assessment earlier than the 15 years, it may. Our goal is to work with the township to have projects chosen to maintain or improve the current health and recreational value of the river." That's how this fact sheet started. That's the first lines of the fact sheet. The idea was never intended for this to be a $300 a year assessment forever. The idea was that an AdHoc Committee would make determinations of what the SAD level needed to be for a particular given year, and it would fluctuate based on the costs of the projects. So I think some people have kind of, I hear these, these stories about, oh, they could raise it 10% a year, and it'll be $1,500 a year. The River Association made a pledge that this wouldn't exceed $300. And that's how we, we sold it, if you will, to the members of, of the community or of the property owners of the river. And I'd just like to remind everybody that the association still stands, at least from what I've read in their publications, behind that. So I just wanted to, to mention that. And I think somebody might have left their cell phone up here.
Good evening. Dave Walters, 4707 Little Harbor. While I see that the intentions of the SAD is, is good for the river, my, my objection would be on how it's being assessed. On Little Harbor, we're a street divided between waterfront property owners and non-waterfront owners. We have an easement. We have multiple people with boat lifts and boats on the river that do not have waterfront property. So for me and myself, I, and I know, talking to Scott earlier, when this whole thing started, their big thing is they did not want to go after everybody with deed at access. I think Maricabo is another issue with the Marina, 12, 15 boats there of non-waterfront property owners. That's, that's my issue with that. I think the SAD, I think we do need something, but I think we need to consider who is assessed, and if there is access, then we should all have a level playing field.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Carpenter. I reside at 5016 Sequoia. Just on a lighter note, I think this is the first time I've worn a pair of dress shoes in 15 months, because I, I'm able to work from home, but I never skip an opportunity to praise the frontline medical workers. My wife is a nurse at Sparrow Hospital, actually on shift right now, and she specializes in ventilators. So you can imagine, she's been wearing a set of shoes different from me, so I wanted to acknowledge that. I also have to read a statement just briefly from some residents on the river. They had trouble emailing earlier today. They were getting a bounce back. I did verify that. It's Morgan and Jackie Cole, 6717 Berger. They write in support of the Thornapple River Special Assessment District, and they authorized me to say that this evening. Going back to my timer. So I'm not going to read in detail from the statement that, you know, I was represented by Mr. Drukey that spoke earlier. You've all probably seen the document that was submitted. I won't bore you with reading through that. I fully support the statements that were made in that letter by an attorney representing me and other members of the association. What I would say is that, you know, I've been on the Thornapple River since 1978. Of course, I was born in 1978, but I think I was on it since then, and my family was there before that. So I have a long storied history on the river, and really am very passionate about it as well. In another role, I actually served as the past, immediate past chairperson and current vice-chairperson of a zoning board of appeals in a charter township. It's in Clinton County, north of Lansing. And one of the things that we really pride ourselves on, and that is EBA, is transparency. We never have discussions outside of that meeting. The entire business of that zoning board of appeals is always conducted, sitting in a room, not quite as ornate as this, but similar. And we have a dialogue, we decide, and we give the public their answer right then and there. Now, of course, the zoning board of appeals is a little different, because you can only appeal to a court of law after that. But I've been a chair on that committee or that commission for almost 10 years, and we have never had a meeting outside of a public comment. So what I would like to encourage you to do later this evening, when you go into your private session, I understand there's attorney-client privilege. I understand those natures. I would encourage you all to keep that to an absolute minimum. Do not have discussion about this special assessment district or the Lareway Lake Special Assessment District. Outside of anything related to attorney-client privilege, immediately come back into public meeting and continue the dialogue in front of us. Doesn't mean we can control your vote. Doesn't mean we can control resolutions you bring forward. But we can encourage you to please do that in public. I think that's very important. What I would encourage you to do, of course, can't control you, but I can encourage you to come out of that private session and have somebody on this board make a motion to adopt the AdHoc or Advisory Committee in its form that was presented, move forward and collect the taxes on the roll as soon as possible. I would ask that you do that, and I really appreciate you taking my comments this evening. Thank you.
We do have some virtual participants who would like to add some comments Supervisor Westbrans. For anyone joining us virtually, you may raise your hand, and you will be called on when it is your turn. If you're joining us via telephone, please press star nine, and that will raise your hand. The first resident is Jim Messner.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, very good. Yes, my name is Jim Messner, and I live at 7370 Whispering Ridge, Street Southeast. My wife and children and I have lived on the river for six years, and I wanted to attend the meeting tonight and voice my support for the special assessment district. The river's obviously a gem of a thing here for us in Cascade and plays a very important role, and the special assessment district is going to be something to continue keeping the river the way we all love it and in a great, great spot for the community. So again, thank you, and I just want to voice my support.
Thank you. Okay, next we have John Meyer. Welcome, Mr. Meyer. Please proceed.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to do this. Diana and myself live at 3444 Goodwood. We've been there for over 20 years and have watched the river through many different phases. I wrote you all a note this morning stating that we're definitely in favor of the SAD. We've seen deterioration in the river with felled trees, weeds, erosion due to the boat traffic, and, and a lot of soil, soil runoffs and that sort of thing. So we're definitely in favor of the SAD. And I believe someone just recently stated that the majority should rule. Seems to me that a majority of those on the river, I know when I went around collecting signatures a few years ago, a majority of those on the river actually did, did vote in favor of having the SAD. Seems to me that the majority did speak, and I think we should follow their wishes. That's all. Thank you.
Next, we have Ned Quinn.
Hello, can everybody hear me now?
We can. Please proceed.
Thank you. I spoke the night that the SAD was initially voted on, and I'll reiterate a couple of comments. 2005 to 2009, I was president. My current address, sorry, let me back up. Current address is 7382 Whispering Ridge. At that time, we had worked with the county to develop the SAD based on the river watershed. At that time, they were looking at addressing off-water properties. Obviously, that attempt in 2008, 2009 didn't go anywhere. We've lived on the river since '04 and have seen numerous situations where bayous have been dredged and refilled and dredged again. This is not purely about boater safety. It is, it is regarding preserving the asset that we have on Cascade, Thornapple. And, you know, all the bayous are not fed just by waterfront properties. Whispering Ridge has about 22 residents and eight of which are on the water. The others, we have storm grains that feed into our bayou. The sediment there fills it up. So as much as we could say that, let's expand this, the reality of it is those of us that are trying to protect our asset value live on the river water, and we feel that the SAD is a necessity to maintain the asset that we have. It's not, you know, with regards to boater safety, as I've seen in some letters. It's really to protect it. So I heard John Meyer talk and Jim Messner talk. Invasive species, water erosion. You know, I periodically, every spring, pull tree stumps out of the water in front of my property. I pulled out a cross that somebody had for an accident for their child. And that's all stuff that's washed into the riverbed. So the SAD is going to help us preserve the asset that we have. So I truly support this, and as I said, I fought for it from 2005 to 2009. Unfortunately, it's taken this long to get it approved, so I support your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Branoff.
Sorry, I think I was still muted. This is Kim Branoff, actually, and I live at 5711 Alaska Avenue. And my husband and I have lived on the river for probably 20-some years. And when we first moved in, I mean, the river was wonderful, and that, and I'm a competitive water skier, and that's the reason we moved on the rivers, so I could water ski. And now the, the river is almost not navigable down by our house. I mean, because of weeds and things that have fallen in the water. And so sometimes it's not even worth all the work I have to do to just get our boat out. So anyway, I strongly approve, and, and I think, and I do think there is a safety issue also along with keeping the value of the property at a higher level. So anyway, just wanted to say I support it, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom. Tom, are you joining us on a computer that doesn't have a microphone? If so, if you could type your question into the chat, I would be happy to read it. I'm not able to get you unmuted. And Supervisor Westbrans, we do have some resident comments that have come through the chat. Would you like me to read those to the board? Please, yes. And if Tom's able, we can read that as well, or put it into the second session of public comments. We haven't gotten it yet. So Craig and Janet Clammer of 6891 Berger Southeast said they're so glad that safe water will become available to our neighborhood in the near future, which will remove fear and provide assurance to our families. Thank you to the board. Thank you to the board for all the good work on our behalf. Next was Jim. We heard from Jim. Enix Sutherland of forty-nine, seventy-six Sequoia Drive Southeast wants to express their full support for the Thornapple SAD to ensure long-term cleanliness and usability of the river as well as property values. Cheryl Damato of sixty-eight, sixty-four Maple Crest also wanted to share her support for the SAD. Brent and Shelley Smith of seventy-four, seventy-eight Cascade Road. We are big supporters of the SAD assessment. We feel it is very important to keep the river in the best shape possible. Please do this as a township. Thank you. That is all the comments that I have at this time, Supervisor Les Prince.
Thank you.
Sure. My three-minute, my name is Hazel Rossi, I'm at seventy-two, thirty-eight Cascade Road. I had something prepared, but I think I might end up going a little off of that. But I did want to congratulate you guys for the five million dollars clean water. That's really excited, and I know that neighborhood is thrilled. Who worked on that? So that being said, I know you probably don't want to talk about that email at all. I know that you campaigned for welcoming public scrutiny. I know you, I think that's critical in decisions. I just, the timeline of the Michigan Tax Tribunal and that email that Amy had mentioned, and then you finding the deficiency in March, I feel like, did you realize there was a form you had to sign and you decided not to?
No, not at all. So that's what we will go over tonight.
Okay.
That's not at all what happened.
Okay, so.
If you look, the clerk signed it on March twenty-second, when that should have been before February tenth as well. So I hope that this will clarify some misconceptions.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, you know, I value your, I know you had a big learning curve when you started as supervisor, and I've seen your heart and your passion, and I appreciate that. And I think that you do have the township residents in mind, and I just ask that you all move for the SAD, both SADS forward, as was voted on by the trustee board and the people who have overwhelmingly supported it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Whitley, fifty-thirty Sequoia Drive, and I sent an email to the board this morning. Appreciate those that responded back to that. It base, I don't want to read the whole thing here, but basically the idea is that the tremendous leap of faith from the people of the river community of turning over the maintenance and enhancement of the Thornapple River to the township to be able to collect the funds to maintain the river is really important. And we really appreciate that, you know, that you take this, you know, seriously of providing this base level of support for the river and I hope we can move forward from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Leigh Anne Rowland. I live with my husband Paul at seven-one, seven-six Aqua Free Court. We've lived on the river since nineteen ninety-two, two different homes. The river has changed a lot in those thirty years. There's been a lot of silt, a lot of de-icer from the airport, other stuff from the airport. And I spent six years on the association, and I was kind of shocked to learn, being on that association, that no one really looks out for this river, not the state, not the Eagle, not the township, not the county, nobody. So I think we, we voting for this SAD is about us taking this into our hands, as I see it, and paying the bill and just saying, could you please help us facilitate this? And the river need, does need help, and we're happy to do it. So if you could just help push it along, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lyle Green. My wife Julia and myself live at seventy-one, ninety-six Cascade Road. I have lived in my whole life, so. And when I was a kid, all these bayous that they're talking about, used to be able to fish in those. And the one there in Berger, if you're familiar with, there's a culvert there. You used to be able to take a boat through there and literally boat on the other side. They're all filled in. I think that one on Berger is like three feet wide. The rest of them were all, I love to kayak, but they can't be five inches deep in some spots. So I've seen it really fill it. And I remember the dam, it was like twenty-seven feet. I think it's about half of that now. I could be off on that, but I know it's much less so. It's filling in, and the people in the bio, I kind of feel sorry for them, they can't even get access to the water. So, so they'll let you know, I guess when I was a kid, it was totally a different river. So I'd like to like, keep it. I mean, it is, it's a great asset to have, even for the whole community. People put in down there by the dam, they kayak, tons of people coming down the river. So if, you know, if there's anything you can do as far as keeping that, I totally support it and my wife.
Thank you.
So thank you.
I'm just curious, we've done these a few times. Do you guys keep track of who the names are and where their addresses are? And if they voted for and against, is that a database of that tracked?
Residents that speak or the board members who vote, which ones?
Residents that speak.
Yes, except admittedly, I think we haven't always asked for name and addresses, so that's on me for being new.
So is it, is, is them, us voting or showing, is, does that mean, make a difference? Is it, how many nays versus yays the determining factor of this? Or if, can you explain that? And then one other question. Since my kids are home alone, I didn't plan on staying to the end, but I will if you need my, if I need to vote. So do I need to stay to the end for a vote for tonight to help the SAD go through? How does this?
So the vote is only by the seven board members?
Okay.
But the, certainly the public comments are what the SAD is based on, yeah. And I think hopefully it'll be clarified too, the, there's a process issue, there's different issues. And I understand it all kind of can get lumped together, but if you're not able to stay in person, hopefully you can always log in also.
I can do it at home, so just want to make sure, thanks.
But no, we, I think everyone appreciates the public comments and you make it a lot harder to make decisions, but I think that's probably a good thing. It's a lot easier if you stayed home and just let us wing it. Thank you.
Tom Keith, forty-seven, fifty-five Little Harbor. With this SAB, I agree, we do need something there, but I think there's a lot of misconception here. You hear a lot of these people talking about bayous filling in, and it's always an issue. It has been, I've lived on the river for forty-five years. But I don't think this three hundred dollars that everybody's talking to can address that issue. The bayou dredging is not part of this, as far as I know. But I think there's a big misconception with people that think that they're going to get dredging in their bayous, and that's not going to happen with three hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any other residents wishing to speak?
Paul Strauss from seventy-four, seventy-four Last Ridge. I was going to wait till the end, the public comments at the end, so we could hear what you're actually going to do with the assessment. Because for all we know right now, it, I mean, it was voted, it did pass, and it was just a procedural layer, so it could be going through, or it could be nothing. But anyways, I guess I'm here to represent the, the people who aren't part of the organized effort to pass this. Because obviously, I'm in the overwhelming minority who's against it here tonight, who's speaking up. The main reason I'm against it is because I think it's unfair. I think it's unfair to force attacks on citizens that, some of which don't use the river at all, because it is primarily geared towards boaters despite what people say. That's the primary purpose of it. I don't think you can really argue it. There's a lot of people that live very high up off the river, like myself and my six other neighbors. Two, only two of us use the river for boating. None of us have guaranteed access. We're all going to be taxed. I thought it was three hundred minimum and that it could go up to ten percent. So I appreciate Scott Rissy clarifying that, that, that's good to hear, that it's only going to be as needed. But there's also other property owners who don't have access at all because their bank is so steep, they have thick trees, they'll never have a boat on the river, and they just look at it. And for that person to have to pay for someone like myself, who is a boater, and I'm happy to pay the three hundred dollars, I would donate it right to the Thornapple River Association for this cause if I knew it wasn't going to be used for attorney fees to fight me, which has already been done. I got a packet about that thick from the attorneys from the Michigan Tax Tribunal from, for the township, fighting it with the tax tribunal, which I have a hearing on June seventh. And right now, I don't even know what to say to the judge. I mean, I'm not going to be able to compete against a, a law firm that, you know, had took pictures of my house with a, my boat in the, in the driveway to try to make me look like I'm a hypocrite or something. But I just think the problem with it is it was gone about the wrong way. It should have been, the first thing they should have done with this assessment, since it's geared towards boaters, is guaranteed access to all the parcels sec, assessed, that they will have access to the river. Because right now, I have no guaranteed access to the river. I have to either pay Scott Rissy the hundred and fifty dollars, which I had no problem. I truly appreciate Scott and Hazel letting us use their ramp for the people that don't. But that's not a permanent solution. Scott could change his mind. I mean, he's, I'm probably not his best friend right now, holding this up at all. So he could be like, screw Paul, I don't want to let him use it anymore. I don't think you, what's that? Well, I appreciate that.
I probably can't, but you can.
But that's my, that's my big beef with it. My neighbor is Pete Kenny, who has lived on the river for quite, I'm not sure how long, I think fifteen, twenty years. And he doesn't use it anymore. He just looks at it. Why should he pay for debris removal and weed cleanup and dredging? Or, you know, we don't have a weed problem in front of our, in front of our house.
But it, but it increases the property value for, for boaters.
Supervisor Les Prince, we do have the resident Tom back with his hands raised again. So let's try Tom again. Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, can you hear me this time?
We can, welcome.
Oh, yay, sorry, I had some technical issues, not very good on computers. So hopefully that underlines the importance of me getting on the computer and, and trying to address the meeting. So I appreciate your time. We're at five-oh, nine-oh Sequoia Drive Southeast. Wanted to just, my wife and I care and fully support the SAD proposal. Unlike everybody else who's been speaking, we're new residents, just moving here about in August and then finishing the house two weeks ago. And part of the reason we moved here was specifically to get on the river. So hopefully, the, all the township board realizes what a great asset the river is to the community. And we're up on a hill as well, but we go down and fish and, and kayak. And the, the kids absolutely love the river. So I wanted to thank you for letting me speak, and again, just offer my full support for the SAD proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have received two further chat comments from residents. One is from Jeff, who says, guys, this is our water, let's please care for it. And Clarence Maring of forty-five, sixty-seven Little Harbor Drive writes, I urge the township trustees to uphold their previous decision to approve the special assessment district for the Thornapple River. The issues that precipitated this request have not gone away, but have only become worse. Any further delay is unwarranted, expensive, and detracts from the SAD's ability to address issues of river maintenance, which is what we seek. Do we have any other residents in the audience or in person wishing to speak?
Thank you very much. My name's Jim Van Hoven. My wife Diane and I live on forty-eight, sixty-four Sequoia Drive. Interesting fact is today, as I was cutting the lawn, and we have weeds already starting to grow right in front of us, and Sequoia is probably one of the, the heaviest hit weed patches on the river now. It fills in, except for boats go in and out throughout the year. And we have little tunnels that we come in and out of unless you get a rake and start pulling out the river. And obviously, that's something we can't keep up with on our own. So a couple of comments that I thought was, was interesting, I'll have Scott maybe support me in this. So they keep hearing questions about the structure of the deal, you know, who gets taxed, who doesn't, who's included, who's not. And I believe when this thing started, the recommendation came back from the board, the township board, and how this thing should be done, is that, and how it was put together? Okay. Okay. So we had some interaction because we had the same challenges. I know there's, there is never an absolute fair way to make everyone happy. One that I know we all can agree to is the river is important to us. Even for those who, who don't want this, agree, we don't want weeds, we don't want debris, we don't want it to fill in. And whoever the dredging guy was, we was back there. The way I understand it, once again, from a dredging standpoint, right, you can't dredge all bayous, whoever, for three hundred bucks per person. One thing we did offer up to is to assist. If someone who lived in a bayou was going to go after and dredge it themselves, we would see if there's a possibility, based on the committee that was formed, to assist in that effort to get it done. But yes, we would not be able to fund that completely and empty all the, the bayous. There's just no way. So two other things, the river needs our help, obviously. And what else am I notes here? Oh, like many other people have said, you know, we've been down this road. I've been involved for like five or six years, and we've done everything. You know, we've, we've gone house to house, we've canvassed the neighborhoods, we've gone to meetings, we've gone to double meetings, triple meetings. Just looking for your support today to move this thing forward and approve it as it was stated a few weeks ago. So, thank you.
Has the association looked into silt control, Mr. Van Hoven? Like the reasons behind it? Sorry. Yeah, if there's, I understand it's expensive, but just if it's, are there specific methods that can kind of slow it down or prevent it?
I have to answer via microphone according to system manager fast. It's in that sad fact sheet. It talks about sediment controls for all the bayous. The idea that was discussed in this process was that we would put those controls in place. And then that way, if groups of homeowners wanted to dredge their bayous, they would hopefully not refill as quickly. And the money from the SAD was going to be used to maintain those controls. That was, that was always the, the theory behind it. And hopefully, if, if all of the work was mobilized and done at the same time, the cost, then the cost sharing would be much easier. I'd like to make one quick other mention here. Mr. Strauss made a comment about access. And I had the privilege of interviewing, his nickname was Old Man Thornapple, but Jack Dean years ago before he passed. And he told me that the third person to move onto that stretch of the river was Grandma Pollan, and she came in a covered wagon in thirty-eight. Those were his words. From that time until today, I have never been told by anyone that they couldn't get a boat on the river. Everyone found a way to get access to the river. Now, I may be facilitating access to thirty or forty people a year that don't want to impose on a neighbor with a boat ramp. But that does not mean that if I stop doing that, they won't have access. Everyone has always found a way to get on the river. And I think you know this, Paul, because I'm pretty sure you didn't launch your boat at my house this year. So obviously, you found another way as well. That you're absolutely right. I, I know my, my neighbor over here, Mr. Breen, launched boats on the river for dozens of years, hundreds a year, I think, at one point, or a hundred a year at one point. So it moves around, but there's always somebody willing to help everyone out. Or a hundred a year at one point. So it moves around, but there's always somebody willing to help everyone out.
Jeff Carpenter, five zero one six Sequoia. So one thing Supervisor Esperance, just to mention, I think it's indicative of of this process to look at what just happened with the PFAS, the five million dollars. It's about leveraging different entities, whether it's state, federal, working together with different cities. One thing we talked about when we were originally putting this together was you're right, three hundred dollars does do it, right? But it's leverage, right? You go apply for a grant. You go to get some of that money back from Lansing, right? One of the things they're going to say is what 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 solid base do you have to back up your end of it, right? Having a special assessment district in place for fifteen years is a great legal foundation to be able to then leverage at the state, federal, county level to maybe. Maximize those dollars, maybe do a ten to one match or something. I'm making that number up, right? I mean, it has to be realistic. And when we talked to the manager Swayze, he said, you're right, there's permits galore. It takes forever. But you have to have a solid foundation and a voluntary non-binding association is not a solid foundation. A binding SAD is a good foundation to leverage those dollars. I'd love to get five million like you did for PFAS, but I think that's a. That's something to consider. And just one final comment about the PFAS. I grew up in one of those homes. I drank that water from nineteen seventy eight when I moved away in nineteen ninety six. That house is getting city water, hopefully because of that process. I'm the direct. My family's a direct benefit of it. So I wanted to thank you for that. It kind of bridges those two things together. So thank you.
My name is Craig Merlin. I live on Thorn Hills Court, so have no. Water. Access or any other role in this, other than to say that what I've listened to tonight. Are a whole series of differing. Perceptions of what this sad will do. The fact that the association will not says it caps it at three hundred. Is not in the resolutions that there's a cap to it. It's up to the Board of Trustees. The fact that the association talks about dredging. And other people say we want to maintain this river in a way that's truly usable. As a gentleman just said, doesn't get done for three hundred dollars. A year. And I fully agree with the concept of. Leveraging. But when the board is asked to pass an open ended. Commitment, which talks specifically about dredging. And someone said this transfers if. The control of the river to the township. So now does that township responsible for the cleaning? Maintenance every year if a tree goes down. Well, I recall one of the trustees at trustee Nordhug asking a question about what is the obligations this puts on the trustees? I don't think that question's ever been answered. I think if we had a, for example. If the concept of limiting that cap to this sad. Was put in to the resolution. I think you might have more support than exists today. But I think there are right now members here that I have heard with expectations that require a whole lot more money. Then this sad currently delivers. And therefore, are they going to come back and ask the board at some future point? To hold a public hearing and now let's raise the assessment. We don't know. So. I think there are too many open questions. That with a little perhaps re-editing of the resolution. Which tends to make it all open ended. I think you would find there would be a lot less prepedation. In some of the citizens along the river. Who have opposed this set.
We do have some additional chat comments Supervisor Les Prince. Tom wanted to add that he forgot to mention that he was surprised there were so many stumps in the river when he first used it. And that there wasn't something already in place like the sad. Please approve to save the river. And then we also received two. Questions from Scott Van Solkema. Reference the sad. He wants to know if the township. Will contribute to it for all the properties that the township owns. He's also wondering where minutes and agendas and documents are on the website for the township board from two thousand and fifteen. He only sees two meetings that have documents on the website. No further comments.
Okay. Mrs. Manager Fast, why don't you look into this last? Question.
Will do.
Thanks. Want more in the audience?
This three hundred dollars a year that he's talking about is not really three hundred dollars a year. The board has the ability to raise ten percent per year. At the end of fifteen years, that three hundred dollars a year is almost twelve hundred dollars a year. So this this big thing about three hundred dollars a year is is a bogus. Amount. With the cascade taking on the liability. Of cleaning the river. What happens if there's a death because somebody hit a log? Where does the where does the township? Stand? As far as a legal liability. I know most of the beaches around here have taken lifeguards out because they don't want that liability. So I I think you're setting yourself up for a big fall. I'd also like to know. Or see or see it published on the web. Who is giving? Who is the criteria that they use for giving the exemption to some of the people that from the sad? I I don't know. Some people were given exemptions. For what reason? Nothing's been published. I don't know what the criteria is. I don't have my glasses on. Oh, the petition that was actually started was started, I believe about six years ago. Isn't that aged? I mean, what were the questions asked to the people when they went up to the house if they wanted to sign up for this petition? I don't I don't have any answers to that. I don't think anybody here does either.
You're referring to the? Private petition. Oh, and sir, can we can we have your name again, please? We just didn't hear it. Thank you.
I guess I could try to answer this Scott Rissy seventy three Cascade Road. The petition was started to show the township that there was a majority of residents on the river interested. And starting the process. That's all the petition was used for. The township initiated the process on its own accord. So the timeline of 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 the petition wasn't necessarily important, as long as all the signatures that were on it were still valid. And at the time that it was presented to the township in October of twenty nineteen. The majority of the signatures that were needed were validated. To show that there was a that there was that we had over fifty percent interest in the in the. No, there's three hundred and five. All of them.
How many properties were involved? The. Marikhaibos Shores, how many homes are in there?
But I would suggest is that if any member of the public would like to make public comment to the board, if they're physically able to, if they could step up to the podium. So that the board can address you at that time.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Virtually.
Further comments virtually.
We will conclude this portion of public comments. Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a discussion or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve, support, or shiply.
I would just add a discussion note quickly, the May twelfth, two thousand twenty one board minutes draft board minutes. For the for the planning commission appointments, they mentioned only. But Craig, resident Craig Merlin is the new appointment. But they should also mention the reappointment of members Chris Nordhike and also members Scott Rissy. For the term, all three of which would be ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Other than that. Does anyone else have any additions or changes? So I would make the motion. With the addition of that correction to the May twelfth, twenty first.
So moved.
Proposed minutes.
Still support.
It's a motion by say Supervisor Les Prince to approve the minutes with that one addition. Supported by trustee Kessel. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carry. Article seven, financial actions. We have no financial actions this evening. Article eight, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business this evening. Article nine, new business. Start with zero five zero twenty twenty one. This is the public hearing portion for the Robinson Dental Brownfield Plan. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move going to public hearing.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Post? Motion carry. Is there a comment from the anyone in the public? Or in the Zoom audience who would like to comment on this item?
No virtual comments at this time Supervisor Esperance.
Is there a motion to close this portion of the public hearing? It's a motion by treasurer Pierce, supported by trustee Kessel.
No.
Trustee Shipley, thank you. To close the public comment portion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carry.
I'm going to recuse myself of as I have the other two times reporting on this issue.
Manager Swayze, brief overview, please.
Great, thank you. So I am pitching for Sandra Corhorn tonight. This is the one of the final steps of the Brownfield process for the Robinson Dental Project. Where we were required to hold the public hearing, which we just held and adopt a resolution approving the Brownfield Plan. So the purpose of the plan is to create a funding mechanism, in this case tax increment financing. Through which the Cascade Brownfield Redevelopment Authority can. Provide baseline environmental assessment activities, due care activities and other eligible response activities for eligible properties in the township. So our Brownfield Plan will only include Robinson Dental at this time. As there are future projects that may want to tap into available funding, those would be added to the Brownfield Plan as well. So the plans are developed and adopted pursuant to the Michigan Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act. For each project site, a general description of the eligible activities to be paid for with tax increment financing is included. Projections are made regarding the investments planned for each site and their resulting future taxable value. The projections include assumptions about cost, property assessments, and the tax increment created by the redevelopment. The plan describes estimated tax increment and the effect to each taxing jurisdiction. It also provides a projected reimbursement plan. As part of this hearing tonight, notice was sent to each one of the taxing jurisdictions, giving them the opportunity to comment. I will also note that because this project is in our downtown development authority. An interlocal agreement is necessary between the downtown development authority and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. In order to do the tax increment and that interlocal agreement has been approved by those two entities. So we have Susan Wenslick. Available here tonight to answer any questions you might have about the project. The Brownfield Plan was reviewed by our township attorney at Foster Swift and they have given their blessings to the plan.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion or motion?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the Robinson Dental Brownfield Plan.
It's a motion to approve. Item zero five zero twenty twenty one as written. Made by trustee McDonald, supported by treasurer Pierce. All in favor or should we let's roll call. Thank you, Ms. Slater. Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhuck.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Castle. Not voting. Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Les Prince. Yes. Motion carrying. Item zero five one twenty twenty one, resolution to extend timeline for temporary outdoor uses. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So as you all may recall, in an effort to assist and support our local businesses during the pandemic. The Township Board at their June tenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Passed a resolution allowing administrative site plan review for temporary outdoor food and beverage, retail, recreation. And other similar uses due to the coronavirus pandemic. The release resolution was then extended through June first, two thousand twenty one. We do have a handful of businesses in the township that have applied for and been permitted to utilize the temporary outdoor regulations. We've had a couple other interest up a couple others interested in utilizing it this summer as well. As there continues to be coronavirus regulations for our businesses. Due to the continued restrictions placed on the businesses because of coronavirus. The staff is recommending extending the timeline to provide local businesses. An opportunity to continue and operate and support economic recovery efforts. So the attached resolution would extend the timeline through October thirty first, two thousand twenty one. And with consent from the township board, the staff would suggest that the board ask the planning commission to study the matter. As a possible permanent change to our zoning ordinance. What we don't want to do is come back for a temporary extension again. So we think that we should either allow the temporary means to sunset at the end of October. Or ask the planning commission to do something more permanent. Without the temporary use resolution, an applicant applying for these types of uses would be required to obtain a type two special use permit. From the planning commission with approval from the township board. With the exception of the date change, the regulations are the same as presented at the June and October meetings and are attached for your review. The staff has not received any complaints or had any issues with the requests since the administrative site plan review was established.
Thank you. More discussion or emotion?
I move approval and at staff's recommendation of planning commission to look at making this. Permanent.
Support. For a second.
It's a motion to approve the resolution to extend the timeline for temporary outdoor uses. As well as a suggestion to make this permanent.
The planning commission review to whether to make it permanent, yes.
Made by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald. Clerk Slater, please call the roll. Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhuck.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Les Prince. Yes. Motion carried. Next, item zero five two twenty twenty one. Request for proposals for professional architectural and engineering services for fire station number one. Mr. Swayze, a brief overview, please.
All right. So now I'm here as Ben, not as Sandra. So. So at our March tenth Township Board meeting, the Township Board and the public had an opportunity to review the final conceptual planning analysis. For the proposed fire station number one project. The presentation was a culmination of nearly a year long process to develop and recommended location. Conceptual layout and conceptual cost estimates for the replacement of fire station one. The recommendation is for the current fire station number one to be demolished and a new headquarters station to be built to replace it. At the March twenty fourth Township Board meeting, the request was made of the Public Safety Advisory Committee. To propose a process for the completion of fire station number one. After meeting in April and May, the committee is making the following recommendation to the Township Board. The first recommendation is that the Township Board issue a request for proposals. For professional architectural engineering services for fire station number one. To assist in the design and construction of fire station number one, based on the completed conceptual planning analysis. The second recommendation is that with assistance from the selected architectural engineering firm. the township also issue an RFP for an owner's representative for the project, that would be, would represent township's interest of the whole process, as well as the construction oversight during the process. The third recommendation is that the owners, is that the architectural engineering firm and the owner's representative will work collaboratively to issue construction bidding documents to solicit construction bids for the Township Board to consider a general contractor to complete the construction activities. So essentially, the process will involve the township soliciting three different contracts, an engineering, architectural engineering firm, an owner's representative, and a general contractor. Based on the RFP that's before you, we would issue our request for proposals on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, with the proposals due on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The Public Safety Advisory Committee would begin their proposal evaluation the week of June twenty-first, and we've offered them a significant amount of time to do that evaluation based on the idea that they may want to visit facilities that have been completed by the architectural firms that submit bids. The estimation then would be that the Township Board would approve a contract on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The project would approve a contract on the fourteenth, the project would begin on July fifteenth, and of course, the project would conclude at a to-be-determined date when we cut the ribbon on a new fire station. So in your packet, I included a couple items, the proposed request for proposals for professional architectural and engineering services, as well as the conceptual planning analysis for fire station number one, and the estimate of probable cost for fire station number one. So the RFP is designed with the following scope of services, and the Township Board would have to approve each step before moving on to the next phase. So the first phase would be preliminary design. The firm would use our available planning analysis and conceptual design to develop preliminary architectural and engineering documents. The preliminary design would include all the topographic and property surveying of the area, this like selected in the preliminary report, as well as all subsurface soil testing and utility investigation. And deliverables would be include the architectural and engineering drawings at eighty-five percent completion, mechanical and structural design, architectural and site plan, conceptual landscaping, demolition plan and estimate, architectural rendings, and a final construction estimate and timeline. If the Township Board approves a preliminary design, we would move on to final design, which would include final design specifications and preparation of bidding documents of the proposed facility, including a hundred percent complete engineering plans, electrical mechanical drawings, demolition plans, architectural plans, landscaping plans, complete permit application submittal, and the project specification and documents. If the Township Board then approves the final design, we would move on to the bidding phase. The firm will be responsible for the bidding process, include the letting of bids, pre-bid meeting, reception and opening of bids, tailing of bids, and recommendation of the bid selection to the Township Board. And then during construction, it is indicated that the township intends to procure the services of an owner's representative to oversee the construction process. However, the selected firm will still need to work cooperatively with the owner's representative through the entire construction process. So as I talked about a couple times, the Public Safety Advisory Committee has recommended to secure the services of an owner's representative. The RFP does call for the selected firm to assist in that process, and I've included that language in your staff report as well. The owner's representative will be responsible for reviewing every aspect of the process, including but not limited to constructibility, scheduling, cost estimates, value engineering, and construction oversight. So if it's approved by the Township Board, the RFP will be distributed to a list of known architectural firms that specialize in public safety facilities. We have a list of about a dozen right now, as well as being posted on our website, and would be picked up by industry services such as the Builders Exchange located here in Grand Rapids, that would get that out essentially to every architectural firm in the country. The Public Safety Advisory Committee has recommended the Township Board approve the issuance of the RFP for professional architectural engineering services for fire station number one. The issuance of the RFP will have minimum cost to the township, and is absolutely the last step in this process that will have minimum cost to the township. So this will be the biggest single capital improvement project the township has undertaken. With that, the Public Safety Advisory Committee has recommended approval of the issuance of the request for proposals for professional architectural engineering services for fire station number one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More discussions or motions?
Just comment.
Questions?
Although this process will be a little bit longer than slam dunk, like some of the past projects have been, it's going to ensure that this community receives a quality product that can be used for twenty-five to fifty years easily. It ensures that taxpayers' dollars are not going to receive any hanky-panky under the table. And I'm firmly convinced that this is the way to go. Although, sorry, Ben, it's going to put a lot of extra stress in work on the staff's part. You don't get paid enough, Ben.
And we had a public presentation twice, I think, on fire station one. There's been work done, some work done up to this point. I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's Redstone Architecture Group?
It was a combination between Progressive AE and Redstone.
Is that, is this intended to scrap all that and start over? No, okay.
No, nope. So the, the requirement's written right in there, and it mentions in a couple places that we've done our conceptual planning analysis already. We have a conceptual design for a fire station number one. So the, essentially, the work of the selected architectural engineering firm will be to take that conceptual design and turn it into a reality.
And, and that had a lot of input from chief majors and others in the conceptual design, right?
Correct, chief majors, the the staff members from the fire department, the board, the community, there was a lot of input put into that conceptual.
And so that is still going to be, but we're just going to select an architectural firm to do the final drawings and, okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions.
Interesting.
Ben, so, so this RFP is exclusively just for one company, and that's going to be the actual architectural firm. The owner's representative will come later, is that correct?
Correct. So part of the requirement of the architectural firm will be to help us issue the RFP for the owner's representatives. We did a similar thing when we selected Progressive to do the conceptual design. We told them we wanted them to also put out a RFP for industry experts that specialize in fire departments.
Right, okay, good. I just want to clarify. And then second, do you, do you think, I mean, th- this is a pretty aggressive schedule. Do you think we're giving enough time to the architectural firms to respond? I mean, given, it's, it's about two and a half weeks, and we got a holiday weekend coming up, and we want to get a quality response back from those who responded the RFP. Do you, do you think that's enough time for this?
I think it's enough time if they want to bid on it.
Okay.
You know, you know, the, because we're not looking to go until Township Board approval to July fourteenth, we would, you know, we would be able to, you know, push back the time that they should, they would submit a week. That would just be a week less time than the Public Safety Committee would.
And plus, we're giving them all the conceptual layouts, all the work that's already been done, which is very comprehensive. So from that respect, yeah, there is enough time, but I know it's a pretty aggressive schedule, but we want to get moving.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. That's all.
I've been the guy kind of throwing the wrench, I got a whole duffel bag full of wrenches here. I throw them in every now and then, and I've been holding this up by pushing for the three RFP requests for proposals on this fire station build. It's going to come in around seven million dollars. So we want to get it done right, and I think if we if we get it done right, I think it could last us fifty to sixty years. So it's, it's a big project, it's going to cost a lot of money. We want the three different companies involved to watch our back. So the chief has, chief majors has had a lot of input on this. He's put this thing together the way he wants it. It's going to outlive, I think, all of us, but so yeah, that's the reason, we just don't want this to turn out like the Township Hall where it's, you know, one company going for it, and next thing you know, we're thirty-five, forty percent over budget. So that's why we're being a little careful, we're taking our time. I really want to see the lease at the airport come up soon. If we can get one, they've got two sites, two suites. If we can get one of those suites before September first, get in, get started, get the fire department out and start demo. Get this thing moving, maybe we can even get some pudding poured this year. Now that's aggressive. So that's all I've got to say.
I make a motion that we approve the request for proposals.
I just had a question, trustee Nordhuk, or someone else, treasurer Pierce, or trustee Shipley, the three members on the board who have been real active in the Public Safety Committee behind the scenes. Could you explain the change, just a basic, the change? What was initially proposed and how this is different?
We're going to let one company do it, do the whole thing. So there really, really wasn't ever a decision made, the discussion was had about what to do, and the committee considered a whole host of ideas from, you know, asking Progressive, Redstone for a design-build contract, to asking Progressive, Redstone for a design-bid contract, to doing what we're doing now and everything, everything in between, so. But the difference between this and what was done with the Township Hall project was the Township Hall project was a design-build project. So Progressive A and E designed it, and then what they do is they bid out all of the work to individual contractors. Our contractors, Progressive, with Progressive AE, they're responsible for overseeing the construction. Now what will be is we'll have the design-engineering firm, they'll be responsible for bidding it out to a company that oversees the construction. So our contract will be with that general contracting company, and then there'll be a third entity, which will be the owner's representative, which will essentially oversee the, the construction project on behalf of the township.
The original, the owner's representative.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Nordhuk, you really did a lot for a big project that people probably don't know about, because it was behind the scenes.
I second Jim's support.
And I'd just like to add that I appreciate the work by all three of you, and it seems like this new approach is, and gives us more oversight directly and also more transparency. So I'm really happy that that's happening while at the same time, the timeline is still the same as before. I just want to thank the Public Safety Committee. Do we have any updates on the after-action report on the admin? The new admin building? That was, came up? I know, it's just in the discussion part, I was just curious.
I don't, I'd be happy to look into it a little more, put a report together.
Thank you. So that was a motion by trustee Kessel? Or trustee McDonald?
Support by McDonald.
Supported by trustee McDonald to authorize the request for proposals for professional architectural and engineering services for fire station one. Clerk Slater, please call, or sorry, made by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald. Clerk Slater, please call the roll. Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhuk?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesperance? Yes, motion carried. Item zero five three, twenty twenty-one, outdoor gathering permit for Cascade Fellowship Church. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So we've received a request from the Cascade Fellowship Church for an outdoor gathering permit for various events throughout the summer on their property located at sixty-six fifty-five Cascade Road Southeast, and the stated number of attendees is between one and three hundred. So attached here for your review is the permit application that we received. The Township Staff reviewed the application for the outdoor gathering permit from Cascade Fellowship Church and offered the following requirements. Apply for and receive any necessary permits for temporary structures from the Building Department, and approval of an event site plan by Township Staff. Since this report was written, we did receive that site plan, and there's no issue with the proposed site plan from the Township Staff. The proposed requirements will be reviewed with the applicant, and the applicant must agree to abide by all recommendations. There's no financial implications for the township in approving an outdoor gathering permit, and the recommendation is coming from staff to approve the application for the Cascade Fellowship Church for an outdoor gathering permit for various events in summer of two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Any motion or discussion?
Motion made by Shipley to approve the request for the permit.
Second.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhuk to approve the permit for outdoor gathering at Cascade Fellowship Church. Clerk Slater, please call the roll. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhuk?
Yes.
Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesperance? Yes. Motion carried. Article ten, closed session. So pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, section fifteen point two six eight, this is to consider material that's exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. This will be as brief as possible, and we can explain as much as possible afterwards. Is there a motion by any member of the board to enter closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act?
Motion made.
Second.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald to enter closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act fifteen point two six eight. Manager Swayze, can you walk us through what happened?
Yep, to provide the least amount of inconvenience to the residents as possible. I'm actually going to ask the board to leave the boardroom. We're going to go to the history room, which is just on the other side of that wall. And then once the closed session is over, we will return this. So the people that are attending remotely will be able to stay in the Zoom and hear the report afterwards. And anybody here who's in person is more than welcome to stay in this room as well.
We should vote on the motion too before. Motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think. Yeah. Not against. Although. We. The. I would give. My. That's a. And I, whatever. All it takes. It's all. I. Yeah. Always. Exactly. Last thing. And it was pretty. How they know? We have. Well. I have a. Hi. Nice to meet you.
How long have you lived in Europe? How long have you lived in Europe?
It was only twenty seven.
What did?
Where'd you grow up?
Well, I graduated from Porus Hills in sixteen.
Okay. You're junior in high school? Where do you live?
Over in South of Platoon, a town called Great Black.
Had a good basketball team. That's right, we won City championship.
Article eleven, continuing new business. Item zero five four, twenty twenty one, the Thornapple River Special Assessment District. Attorney Bloom, can you please give us as much background and details and clarification as possible? Walk us through what's happening.
Certainly. Would it be okay if I turn this slightly?
Would it be okay if I turn this slightly so I'm don't have my back to the public? If I can, maybe I can't do that. I'll try my, uh, try my best. Uh, I'm Cliff Bloom, special legal counsel for the township on this matter. Tonight, you have a couple proposed resolutions in front of you. And I'd like to just read, uh, one for Leroide Lake, one for Thornapple River sad. I'd like to read the first two paragraphs of the proposed, uh, resolution because I think it, it tells, uh, the public what the flaw in the process was. So, pursuant to four different resolutions and two public hearings, the township board for Cascade Charter Township, enacted the Thornapple River Special Assessment District number one, pursuant to public act one eighty eight of nineteen fifty four. The township board proceeded on its own initiative under MCL forty one point seven two three, and not based on property owner petitions. The township board thought it had successfully and properly created the sad. Unfortunately, it was later discovered that resolution numbers three and four had a material defect and that the township supervisor was not presented with a proposed special assessment property role, and as such, was not able to review and certify that special assessment role. So, let me talk a little bit about why that is so key that the assessment role had to be properly certified by the supervisor before resolutions three and four in the second hearing. So, in general, the special assessment district can be broken up into two different parts. The first part involves, uh, resolutions one and two, uh, and the first public hearing. In pursuant to that hearing, the township board got into the merits of whether or not to approve the assessment in general. Um, from what we can tell procedurally, everything was met on one and two. Three and four deal with the second half of the process, which is approving the district, the boundaries of the district, which properties are in the district. And, and, uh, resolution three uh, authorizes the second public hearing, which is on the assessment role, and indicates that the role has been prepared and reviewed and certified by the supervisor. Then you have the, uh, public hearing and then resolution number four. In this particular case, approved the district, approved the assessment role. So the error here was that the special assessment role was, uh, uh, created, but it was never gotten to the township supervisor. So the township supervisor never had a chance to review it, ask questions and certify it. Uh, that was an error that didn't come to light until, uh, approximately a month after the formal public hearing in February. So the township turned to us, asked us to look at the process. We got all the documents together. Uh, we're satisfied that the first half of this process, resolutions one and two, were procedurally correct, all the attachments were there. Public hearing was run, uh, correctly. But for the second half, dealing with the assessment role, resolutions three and four, although they recited that the role had been given to the supervisor and certified by the supervisor, through, through clerical oversights, it was not. And so we were asked to give our legal opinion and our legal opinion in general, uh, is that it is a fatal flaw that the role was not certified and attached to the documents for resolutions three and four. And that if the township board wants to proceed, the statute allows you to do a do-over. You can start at the process or the point in time where the defect occurred, declare everything thereafter invalid and then proceed from that. So if the township board chooses to proceed with this, uh, it would invalidate resolutions three and four. It would proceed with having the role properly given to the supervisor, the full role. She would review it. If she's satisfied it's correct statutorily and factually, she would certify it. It would go into resolution three, the township board would review, uh, resolution three again. If it passes, schedule the public hearing and do a do-over in the second public hearing, then proceed to resolution number four. And again, the statute is unusual in that MCL forty one point seven three, three, three allows a duo. It expressly says if either a court or the township board discovers a flaw, it can go back to the point of the flaw and go forward and, and do it correct. So some people might say, well, isn't this just a clerical error? Why don't you just go back and redo resolutions three and four? And it's our legal opinion that the whole second half of the special assessment process depends on the assessment role being certified by the supervisor. And since the supervisor was never given that role, she never had a chance to review it and certify it. So we think it supports the whole second half of the process. So simply going back if the township board wanted to and redoing the, having the supervisor certify the roles and redoing three and four without the public hearing, we don't think would cut it. And the courts are quite strict, including the Michigan Tax Tribunal, as far as on special assessment proceedings, making sure all Ts are crossed, all Is are dotted. And we have four pending cases, uh, in the tax tribunal right now. So we would, if this, i- i- if, if, if you don't proceed to undo this and so on, we would still disclose that to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. Now, one of the issues that's come up is whether or not to refund the hundred dollar filing fee that the four property owners have had to, uh, pay to the tax tribunal. And that's certainly something the township board can consider, and I believe that's full authority to refund. So, that's where you are tonight. Uh, you've got two sets of resolutions, they're virtually identical. One for the Thornapple River Special Assessment District, one for the Leroide Lake Special Assessment District. Alternative A in each of those is a resolution that recognizes the defect, invalidates resolutions three and four, and then determines to proceed. Uh, and obviously we can't know now how the township board's gonna vote on resolutions three or four, but it would be a general authorization to get the assessment role to the supervisor to ever certify it. And when that happens, proceed with three and four and do the public hearing again. Alternative B for both of those acknowledges the error and validates resolutions three and four, but basically says the township board is not gonna make a decision tonight or pursuant to that resolution, how to proceed. That it wants to, uh, think about it more and, and, and digest things more and so on. It would decide at a future time whether to tentatively proceed with resolutions three and four. So with that, uh, board members, I, I hope that's a good summary of why we're here tonight. This really is not an issue right now on the merits. It will be obviously if you proceed to three and four and have the hearing again. But this is a procedural matter where our legal opinion is that, uh, it's a fatal flaw. Resolutions three and four really should be invalidated. Uh, and if you want to proceed with it, the right way to do it is to get the role certified, do resolutions three and four and do the second public hearing over again. Madam Supervisor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? And since there's so much public interest, any questions from the audience, I think would be proper to.
Can I still stand up?
O'Neil, on the board first.
I'm Hazel Rissy at seventy-two thirty-eight Cascade Road. So, it's my understanding that the roles were in both of the packages on the Friday before the meeting. So are you saying you didn't read the package? You didn't read the role in the package three days before the meetings?
That I failed to understand that the certification and the way the paper was prepared was that it had already happened, it had already been certified, and that's not what had happened. So I feel, I, yeah, it's true that I failed to catch that in the, in the hundreds of pages and I wish I would have.
I just feel like it's a technicality and I feel in light of that email and you wanting to have three people on that ad hoc committee, I feel like this is a, like you're being stubborn and making a, a mountain out of a molehill. And I'm disappointed that this is the township's decision, uh, that it's a fatal flaw.
I think we're following legal advice. And if you look at the signatures, the clerk signed it on March twenty-second, which is after I had asked their staff and our township attorney about it and brought it to their attention. So it's not simply me to, so to say, uh, it's true that I voted against some, based on some process concerns. But the email you referenced, and it was, I believe, to Mr. Kenny, who was opposed to the special assessment district. That email was a direct response to inquiries about citizens on both sides, whether both sides would be heard. And when I said two more, Mr. Kenny had been vocal in opposing the special assessment district, or at least in his concerns about how the money would be handled. So having three people on one side of the issue equally represented by opposite, I understand it to hot topic, but it had nothing to do with, I'm one vote. There was, and, and if you want the details, there's nothing improper or a technicality to try to get it the second way at all. In fact, me bringing it to the attention of the ta- council and staff is what's actually making sure that if it is passed, it's done properly. So it's, it's really to protect both sides.
I, I hear you. Uh, at the same time, three people on a board with four residents is not equal. Uh, there are, there's a township board member, there is a CTR, and this is hypothetical, but this is how it was explained in the beginning of the process. So there would be four people on that committee that were residents. So to say that you wanted two more to have three is not balanced.
Oh, I.
And that's where.
And that's not, then I apologize for the miscount in that email, the email to the resident after the fact. It had nothing to do with a substantive vote of the sad, at which time I believe was valid. That's simply to make sure that on this hot contentious topic where we're, where you're asking the township to impose taxes, uh, over a million dollars on private residents, that both sides are represented. So if I incorrectly, just one moment, please. If I incorrectly stated three residents would be equal, I apologize.
So your intentions for the ad hoc committee are to have a balanced ad hoc committee?
All sides be heard. Since all of them are going to be taxed, it just seems reasonable that they're heard because they're taxed, even though they opposed it. Sure. So I apologize that that email, that private email to a resident who opposed it could be misinterpreted. But there is absolutely nothing. And if you look at the clerk's signature on March twenty-second, that would pretty much confirm that there was, it, ask as many detailed questions as you want, but I think to infer that because I voted against it, it's a backdoor technicality. It's, it's, there's, it's not true. So I appreciate your concerns. It's, it's valid, but it's just not how it was. Mr. Merlin, sorry, and then.
I would like to ask a question with regard to the certification language. It says in her best judgment, conformed to the direction of the Board of Trustees and resolution, whatever, and to the statutes of this state. And I'd like to know what those last six words mean. What do they refer to?
That's, that's a very good question. The statute doesn't define it. Um, I think part of it probably goes to the benefit that'll be derived by the individual property owners. As you probably know, that's the standard, the Michigan Tax Tribunal.
That goes to the sentence before, which talks about relative assessment to total assessment, proportionality to relative benefit. So there is what I would call an essence of fairness testing. And if the superintendent or supervisor doesn't believe that that assessment formula was fair in that it, let's say assesses a thirty-five hundred dollar parcel, the same amount that it's assesses a million dollar parcel, should she sign it?
Th- that's an interesting question. We've been asked to look at, but if we're asked, we'll look at it. And keep in mind, I think implicit in your question is, is you understand this, that she never had a chance to review or certify the role because it was not formally presented to her.
Just to clarify Ms. Rissy's comment, the, the packet beforehand that I saw is true, but it already took into, the, the error had already occurred that it, the paperwork, as it was put together, said the certification has already happened, blah, 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 and it hadn't happened. So in hindsight, I wish I would have known in advance what to look for and it, but and I apologize for that. We're all doing the best we can.
Uh, David Heck, seventy-three hundred Cascade Road. Um, I just wanted to ask, so now you're aware of the role. And, uh, should this move back to, uh, resolution two? Would you sign the role as is?
That's separate. You're confusing steps and I, I get it, but this is, so right now we have to declare.
You didn't, you didn't certify the role as is because you were not aware of it. Had you been made aware of it and it, it's not changed at all, would you sign the role as is? Or are you looking for a change in the role?
So it's two different questions as.
I don't think it is.
No, it is. Listen, if, I believe it is. And I've talked to multiple attorneys for the past two months about this. And again, I'm one of seven. My vote is no more valuable than any other.
But you're responsible for certifying the role, your signature. So you have to look at the role and decide whether I'm gonna sign it or not.
And after extensive conversations with multiple attorneys, special counsel and general counsel, after discovering the error, I would, as is, yes, I would certify it. I plan to. But that is also then the steps three and four, based on my understanding, after a public hearing, that that role can be amended if the board chooses to take other options that may be more equitable, if rather than, that, so that means the role could be amended.
So the role was prepared. The township board acted as if that was certified and sent notifications to everybody on that role. So the role is, has been clearly defined. There's even been oppositions to being included in the role. Those have been investigated. They were removed from the role because they were deemed not to be frontage property. So the role was, was prepared. It was not signed. So I'm just simply asking the role as is, would you sign it as is and then move forward from there? Or would you be looking for a change in that role? What's your intention?
It's both because I would sign it. That's a precondition and I'm sorry.
Once you sign it, it's done. It's set.
It's not.
Yes, it is.
Well, let's defer to counsel because steps three and four is I'm unders, if, as I understand them, it can be amended by the board, not the supervisor unilaterally.
Correct. So, yeah, the pro, we're talking about a two-tiered process. So you're presented with the role. Let's assume you certify it and sign it and so on. If, if that's the role that the, the board adopts after the public hearing, that's the role. But at the public hearing, a board member can say, I make a motion to approve resolution number four with the following changes to the role. And then it depends on whether or not a majority, obviously, uh, enacts that. So.
So the board has discretion after the certification happens to amend the role if it chooses.
I- if it's based on proper reasons, absolutely.
And the proper reason would be what, Attorney Bloom, just so that we're.
You know, they look at a map and you, there were, i- i- as I recall, Ben, there were two properties, I think, that were taken out because it, it turns out they actually didn't have frontage on the river. Either it filled in or whatever. So given, given the public interest in this, it, it wouldn't be unreasonable when you get the role to sit down with maybe Ben, the assessor, uh, and so on, and look at the maps and just make absolutely certain it's correct. But if you certify the role and the township board adopts that, that's the end of it. But, but the township board has the option to change the role. Um, that didn't happen at the last hearing. But that's still an option the township board has. Now, a- again, I, I wish this was just one of those little legal technicalities, but unfortunately, the statute says in two different places. This township supervisor, not the board, township supervisor shall review and certify the role. So unfortunately, it's, it's one of those things that I think is a basic foundation of the whole process.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to get into any of the technicalities, but from afar here, we went through a process that had multiple announcements because of various problems. Uh, now we're having extra legal fees. We're looking at perhaps repeating notices, meetings, et cetera. And if the sad ultimately gets rejected, all of those costs clearly go to the township. If the sad is ultimately approved, kind of as written, all of those causes, costs, all those missteps get put back on the sad. I don't want to have a sad that gets approved and the first two years of the tax collection or, or fee collection, you keep saying taxes, but it's a fee and, and not taxes. But I don't want to have the first two years of the fee collection only paying lawyers.
only paying lawyers. I want something to do good for the river. So I think there's a lot of fair and equitable things that need to be taken care of. And we need to make sure that, you know, the process works, but that people are treated fairly.
Thank you. Can you get his name? Oh, sir, is this, is it Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Having heard the discussion at the public comments section earlier, where it seemed like we were talking about two different projects, can other changes be made other than just inclusion or not inclusion of parcels in the SAD? Can you, for example, modify a project description to take the possibility of dredging out, or the possibility of this assessment increasing by 10 times, or whatever, a cap on the amount of total assessment? So that the unfairness inherent in the current formula, if one posits that not every parcel gets proportional benefit, can be rectified by the modest amount of the SAD assessment in total?
We're getting a complaint from the Zoom audience about that microphone. Could you try to use this one?
Be glad to. Yes, is the answer. It's highly unusual. Usually, again, it's two parts. The first part is the scope, whether or not to do it. The second part is the district. But theoretically, the township board, if it's learned additional things, could modify what was done earlier. But it's, it's highly unusual. One thing I don't believe they can do is I don't believe they can decide in three and four to go back and pull in easements and other people. I think if they decided to do that, they'd have to start the whole thing over. But yes, theoretically, it could be changed. Some of the things you mentioned, it'd be highly unusual.
Any other questions or comment, board members?
I'd like to make a motion. We have two resolutions. Resolution A says that we So I, I make a motion that we approve Resolution A for the Thornapple River Special Assessment District. That allows us to just go back one step, cross the Ts, dot the Is, make sure that everything's done legally right. And in that, refund any filing fees for the, I think, four parties that have paid to the tax tribunal. That way, we get to proceed with the Special Assessment District. We will publicize the public hearing, which we need to do. We will have the public hearing. And then we can do the final vote on the Special Assessment District. So with that, I, I make a motion to approve Resolution A.
Madam Supervisor, since there weren't copies of the resolution available, would you like me to read the the relevant portion of that resolution that was the basis of the motion?
Please. And just to clarify, under trustee McDonald's motion, that there were four residents who filed appeals with the tax tribunals, and those hundred, the $100 filing fee would be refunded by the township. Not the tax tribunal, but by Cascade.
With your permission, I'm going to omit the recitals because I've already read most of those. So be it resolved as follows. This would be alternative A Thornapple River Special Assessment. Number one, the resolution in this matter dated January 13, 2001. Resolution number three, and the resolution in this matter dated February 10, 2021. Resolution number four, hereby declared to be fatally defective, and are hereby rescinded. Number two, the township board has determined that all proceedings related to the SAD prior to the Resolution number three were proper and in accordance with Michigan law. Number three, the township staff and special legal counsel are hereby directed to draft a new proposed Resolution number three regarding the proposed SAD and to present the same to the township board for review and eventual approval. The township assessor, in cooperation with the township manager, is hereby directed to prepare and present to the township supervisor for her review and certification the special assessment role for the properties specifically benefited by the public improvements, i.e. the control and partial eradication of aquatic plants and weeds within the covered portion of the Thornapple River by means of chemical treatment, biological agents, and/or mechanical harvesting, also river management. Excuse me, including but not limited to river studies, dredging, removal, river blockages, sedimentation, and similar undertakings, and as specified in the early resolutions. Number five, once the township supervisor is properly reviewed and certified, the special assessment role pursuant to the Act, a new Resolution three will be presented to the township board for action at the appropriate township board meeting. If the township board then determines to proceed, the appropriate new public hearing on the special assessment role will be scheduled, and the township board will be presented with a proposed new Resolution number four. Number six, all proceedings in this matter before January 13, 2021 are hereby ratified and confirmed. Number seven, the township special legal counsel is hereby directed to notify the Michigan Tax Tribunal regarding this matter and determine how to appropriately deal with the four pending property tax appeals regarding the Thornapple River Special Assessment District number one. Madam Supervisor, that's, that's the end of the resolution. I just want to say it'll be up to the tax tribunal, whether they want, they'll want the appeals and the district dismissed, or whether they'll hold it in abeyance in cases this board reapproves it and the property owners still want to appeal. So.
And then just so we're clear, regardless of what the tax tribunal does in that situation, the township will refund the $100.
The $100. That's my understanding of the resolution.
So it's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the resolution as stated by counsel Bloom. Clerk Slater, please call the role. Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Clerk Slater? Yes. Supervisor Lusprin? Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Larois Lake, 0542021.
Unless there's anybody here from Larois Lake, I would ask your counsel Bloom to say ditto.
Ditto, and I would like to also incorporate, there's a misspelling in two different places. It says persing, and it should be, I believe, pursuing.
Is that effect effective, or just that's a?
Just that.
We can look beyond that one, right?
Correct. So, yes, Resolution or alternative A for Larois Lake is exactly the same as Resolution A for Thornapple River, just with the name changes.
Counsel Bloom, now that you're picking on spelling, role is also misspelled a couple of times. It should be R-O-L-L instead of R-O-L-E.
That spot checking just doesn't do it sometimes. So again, we will get you the revised resolutions tomorrow. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve Larois Lake alternate A resolution and move forward. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the Larois Lake Special Assessment District proposed Resolution A. Clerk Slater, please call the role. Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Clerk Slater? Yes. Supervisor Lusprin? Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Article 12, Public Comments. Anyone wishing to speak in the audience, virtually or in person? Anything left to say?
I would point out, unfortunately, due to some internet connectivity issues in the room, the Zoom was down for a time. It is back up now. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment, you can raise your hand now. There are no raised hands at this time, Supervisor Lusprin.
Thank you. Article 13, Manager Comments. Manager Swayze? Anything you'd like to add?
I promise to keep it brief. You'll recall, over the past couple of meetings, we did approve our designated assessor contract with Kent County. And we talked a lot about the AMAR, which is our audit of our assessing department. And it indicated at the time that I thought that our assessing department would pass our AMAR with flying colors. I just wanted to share a letter that supervisor Lusprin received from the State Department of Treasury today, May 26. As you are aware, Tax Management Associates really conducted an audit of minimum assessing requirements on behalf of the State Tax Commission. The audit indicated that Cascade Township met all of the minimum requirements. We wish to congratulate the union on receiving a perfect score on the review, and thank you for your cooperation throughout this process. So I just wanted to congratulate manager of assessing services, Jennifer Genter, as well as our contract assessor, Deb Ring, and Roger McCarty, and Holly Benedict, and Sean on a great job. And we will not have to use that contract. So that's good as well.
Thank you. Article 14, Board Member Comments. Trustee Shipley?
As always, I stand up and thank you guys for coming tonight. We listened to all of your comments, the people with the issues with the tax tribunal. I wish you your best. And we'll forward, carry forward with the quickest we can what we approved tonight. So thanks for being here. Bring your neighbors back next time. I know it's a long meeting. Next time, it might be shorter.
I'd just like to say thanks for coming too. It's great to see a bunch of people in the audience. Love to hear from you, and it does matter. So thank you.
I want to say that I do appreciate all the comments. This is a probably the trickiest issue because it's so hotly contested on both sides. But I do think that we all agree that the river does need protecting, and that the maintenance of the river is really important. So I just, at least personally, we may disagree on how to get there or what's best. I personally think that the revenue from the Cascade Dam, we could easily do $40,000 annually, which could go to river maintenance for that portion above, similar to what's done at the Ada Dam. I think that the board should look into that, and I've talked about that in person. But I just want to say, I think of the Cascade, that the river is our defining feature, and I fully want to help keep it that way. But the actual process, I think, is trickier. But thank you for all coming out. Article 15, Adjournment.
Shipley makes a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by trustee Shipley to adjourn, supported by clerk Slater. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Rejourned.
I was going to ask you something, Ben, I forgot what.